...of room, there's currently a garage on there that was built in the 1980s that has a room that is already rented. We are currently, you are going to vote on a variance, but the business has been running. It has been running with four rooms already used inside the main house, three rooms inside the carriage house, one room that is already built in the garage and three others that are in construction, two acres lot on the side of it with a house on there that is already rented. So we currently already have ten rooms that are rented. This is where we have an issue. It is important to emphasize that SGNA, Sterling Grove Neighborhood Association, and its member have nothing personal with RPG Hospitality and Mr. Ravi Dagula, its agent. We have welcomed him in our neighborhood. We also had our annual festival on the ground of the plantation and had expensive permanent electrical work done for RPG Hospitality LLC at our cost. We also made our advertising and all the festival logistics available for RPG Hospitality to use during our festival for their grand opening. SGNA is solely concerned with the integrity of our neighborhood and its residential area. We have always welcomed the bed and breakfast in our neighborhood and it has been operating as such for the past thirty years under the previous owner, Mr. Kurtie Voorhees, and up to this variance if it passes or not. The request for a variance of four rooms, you're going to be voting for that, there's four rooms, there's a total of five rooms in that house. The ordinance speaks in these terms, it says on the 2015 UDC Section 8977A, applicability, this section applies to the city of Lafayette. The owner proprietor must live in the principal structure and the bed and breakfast facility used shall be secondary to the principal use of the dwelling for residential purpose, which means that the residential purpose is one, bed and breakfast is two. If they get, there is four rooms that are used, which means eighty percent, there's a total of five rooms currently, if four rooms are used as bed and breakfast, that's eighty percent of the facility that is used for business. One room is used, that's twenty percent. The residential aspect is not anymore primary, it's secondary, and the bed and breakfast aspect becomes primary, and that is something that is very important. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna conclude, I want to thank you for your consideration on this pivotal decision for the future of our neighborhood because we are really adamant as keeping, we want this bed and breakfast, but what makes this neighborhood unique is that it is residential. Tourists will come to see this neighborhood. If all the houses have been turned into hotel, what is the purpose of the neighborhood? You know? Thank you.
Thank you. Carly, could you come forward for a second, please?
And Mr. Chair, one more note.
Uh huh.
Nine citizens signed in who did not wish to speak but signed in to support the ordinance.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, recently you did some restructuring, or you, you're, you're working, the process of doing some restructuring of your department that the administration has approved and budgetarily we've made the arrangements in this last budget. Compliance?
Yes, sir.
Prior to that time, we didn't have anything that actively made sure that the zoning laws that are on the books were being complied to regardless of what the function was. Give me a little, tell me a little bit about that, please, for the sake of this discussion.
Basically, currently, our enforcement actions within the zoning division happen primarily, as you all indicated, on a complaint-driven basis. When we did the proposed reorganization, we aren't so drastically increasing our resources enforcement that we think that that will change, but we are creating a compliance division so that we can more carefully manage complaints with the hope of one day sort of being a little bit more proactive in the compliance area as well.
Yeah, all right. And that, as of this time, that's non-existent?
Correct, it's just complaint-driven within the zoning division.
Somebody have a complaint, they call it in?
Yes.
You do the best of your ability to look into it and then make determinations from there?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. The reason I asked for Carly to share that with us, the two times this has come before this council, what seems to be the position is that the neighborhood welcomes the activity looking for some assurances that those activities don't transition into something that is not supposed to be allowed there, and particularly any function of a hotel type setting, but they, they welcome the, the bed and breakfast concept. Mr. Bowen came up, he's right out, I haven't been to the property recently, but as a child I spent a lot of time there, the judis is down there on Sterling and then coming up to the Bowen's house and, and playing many, many years there. And, and I'm gonna support the, the ordinance, but what I also want to be clear on is that and this is a message to the department on behalf of the people is that we're gonna have to just make sure that everything the gentleman says he's going to do gets done and everything that he's supposed to do remains in place and continues to get done. We have compliance issues all over this city and I represent a community, I tell you, we get an influx of developers who want to do low-income housing. We get an influx of folks who want to do affordable housing. I, I myself live right across the street from Habitat from Humanity Development and I've had some of my constituents come to me, critical of some of those things, and in my mind I've always said, I said, you know, if everyone has to remain where they were born, that mean they could never grow. So I know that the neighborhood I grew up in and the neighborhood I stay up now is significantly different and if God continues to blesses me, where I might end up one day is gonna be different than where I'm at now. That, that's the beauty of this process. And what I tell them as it looks to the residential needs that are being met with these types of developments, I'm not gonna allow myself to be afraid of what could happen, I'm gonna make sure that everybody does what they supposed to do to prevent it from happening. So when I live across from Habitat or when people come and do low-income developments in and around my community trying to meet those needs, historically we have supported them, you know, and we try to keep it moderate. Well, transitioning to this issue, what I'm hearing is that we welcome the bed and breakfast just as long as it don't become these hotels and certain types of living and in certain types of activity, and I'm confident that we could control that. I'm confident that this government can control that and, and with harsh penalty, with harsh sanction and everything within the strength of this government that when things go out of compliance, when things are not honored, that action be taken, and that's how you continue to win over and maintain the trust of people. This discussion tonight has, has been beautiful because two of the things that stuck out is, is one gentleman says, "Father, put him on a plane to come to Lafayette with $200 in his pocket and he hasn't left yet." And another gentleman came here to that same university with a hundred-dollar car and he hasn't left yet. And although they're friends and they, they, they like what's happening, they differ on the direction, but they're both steer in Lafayette and I think that's what makes Lafayette beautiful. And, and I, I think that we can let this happen and still protect the community, I used to represent that community, okay? Reapportionments took it from District Four and put it in District Three to maintain some, some federally mandated numbers, but I'm very familiar, spent many years, like I say, the Judy's house, the Bowen's house, spent many, many years in that corridor right there. Very familiar with it, pass by it every day, pass in that area every day. So I don't want to see anything negative happen there either. You know, everything from, from the Chappie House on the corner of Moss and Simcoe, all going back into the neighborhood, going all the way down to Louisiana Avenue, just, that's an important area to me, walked those streets for many, many years. So I think that we could support this, but make sure that, that neighborhood's integrity is maintained in the minute it dips. There's no excuses, you hold people accountable. And when we do business in that way, we continue to allow development to take place, we continue to allow growth to take place, okay? But at the same time, we protect other people's investment, like the neighborhood has said. He's not the only one investing in his property, they have invested in their property every year. So it's about the entire neighborhood and I, I, I think this, 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 this is a good thing, someone said Lafayette has a great opportunity, there may be some additional things that need to be done, but stopping this I don't think is one of them. And the last thing I'm gonna say before I allow anyone else who wants to comment before we vote, Sid, I, I want to identify the scouts because I'm glad they're here, this was a great example of government today, tonight, as it relates to everybody having their voices heard. Now, unfortunately, you heard me, I had to try to keep some control of things and that's not easy, because as a chairman, you want to make sure, the one thing you want to do is allow everyone to speak, but just like we have rules here, everyone have to follow rules, okay? So we have rules here, just like the rules that's in this zoning ordinance, the developer of this property is gonna have to follow those rules. Someone referenced the rules in Baton Rouge, which are different, well, guess what, we're not in Baton Rouge, we in Lafayette, so we gotta follow Lafayette rules. Baton Rouge says nine, Lafayette is saying seven on this one. So it's a good example for you young gentlemen going forward on how important, there're gonna be different rules, different places, but at the end of the day, we all have to follow them. So I hope you really enjoyed this discussion and this process that you saw here today. So with that said, I don't see any other council members wanting to speak. Madam Clerk has already acknowledged the nine members who signed in in support of. The ordinance has been amended favorably, so now we're gonna vote on the ordinance as it has been amended.
District Five?
Yes.
District Six?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
District Nine?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt as amended is approved. Ordinance 174, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council declaring the building or structure located at 6733 Cameron Street, also known as 202 Jenkins Road, Lafayette, Louisiana, owned by Peggy Martin Nelson, to be dilapidated and dangerous to the public welfare and ordering the condemnation of same.
Motion by Nakken?
Second.
Second by, who, who are you again?
A-B.
Counsel discussion? You just disappear on me sometimes. Seeing none of the blue cards? Call the vote.
District Six?
Yes.
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
District Nine?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five? Motion to adopt is approved. Ordinance 175, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1718 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $140,184 received from Louisiana Highway Safety Commission and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department.
Motion by A-B, second by Kong. Counsel discussion? Seeing none any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Please call the vote.
District Seven?
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
District Nine?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Six?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Ordinance 176, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the Unified Development Code so as to reclassify the property of Nouvelle Group LLC, represented by Billy Hoffpower, case number ZON 2017-26, 1700 block of La Nouvelle Road rezoning, located generally north of La Nouvelle Road, east of Vero School Road and southwest of Ambassador Caffrey Parkway from commercial mixed to mixed-use neighborhood conditional.
Motion by Cook? Second by Castile. Counsel discussion? Seeing none any blue cards?
We do have one signed in, Bill Hoffpower.
Mr. Hoffpower?
Passes.
Passes.
He signed in in support, that's the only blue card.
Thank you. Call the vote.
District Eight?
Yes.
District Nine?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Six?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Ordinance 177, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the Unified Development Code so as to reclassify the properties of SAJ LLC, represented by Jason Bruno, case number ZON 2017-27, 500, 504, and 510 West Gilman Road rezoning, located generally north of West Gilman Road, east of Harmony Street and west of North St. Antoine Street, from residential single family to residential mixed.
Motion by Nakken? Second by Lewis. Counsel discussion? There is none any blue cards?
Jason Bruno?
Mr. Bruno? Passes.
He was, he signed in in support.
Thank you. Call the vote.
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Six?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Ordinance 178, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council setting forth and designating the adjusted at-valorem tax mileage rate and imposing taxes on all property subject to at-valorem taxation in the parish of Lafayette and authorizing the tax assessor and tax collector for the parish of Lafayette to assess and collect the mileage rate for 2017 at the rate of 1.68 mils for the Lafayette Economic Development Authority.
Motion by Nakken? Second by Kong. Counsel discussion? There is none any blue cards? Please call the vote.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Six?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
District Nine?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Ordinance 179, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council setting forth and designating the adjusted at-valorem tax mileage rate and imposing taxes on all property subject to at-valorem taxation in the parish of Lafayette and authorizing the tax assessor and tax collector for the parish of Lafayette to assess and collect the mileage rate for 2017 at the rate of 1.58 mils for the Lafayette Airport Commission.
Motion by Nakken? Second by Cook? Counsel discussion? There is none any blue cards? Please call the vote.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Six?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Ordinance 180, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council setting forth and designating the at-valorem tax mileage rates and imposing taxes on all property subject to at-valorem taxation in the city of Lafayette and the parish of Lafayette and authorizing the tax assessor and tax collector for the parish of Lafayette to assess and collect property taxes for 2017.
Motion by Nakken? Second by Kong. Counsel discussion? There is none any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Please call the vote.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Six?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
District Nine?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Motion to adopt is approved.
Ordinance 182, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 operating budget and manning tables of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by reducing the use of prior-year fund balance by $9 and adjusting the salaries of various employees within the office of the district attorney due to the retirement of a secretary too.
Motion by Lewis? Second by Nakken? Mr. Terrio?
Yes, I had one individual just question if the dollar amount is actually $9 that we're making an adjustment here, and I assured him that, but I guess, Ms. Toobes, if you'd like to follow up on that?
You're not getting the amendment because of the $9, you're getting the amendment because as of this moment, the employees are still on our manning tables and it's a shift in change in the manning tables.
Yes, ma'am.
The end result was a savings of $9.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Toobes. That's all I have, sir.
No other counsel discussion, any blue cards? Please call the vote.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Six?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Ordinance 183, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 operating and capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing the use of prior-year fund balance of parish general fund by $23,006 to appropriate within the coroner's office and by adjusting the coroner's office account to cover anticipated expenditures related to the rising number of deaths and the escalating number of coroner emergency certificates.
Motion by Nakken? Second by Bellard. Counsel disc, Mr. Terrio?
Who is addressing this particular ordinance? Do we have anybody here? Well, I hate to put you on the spot, I guess the question is, is that I've been here for a while along with a number of the council members here, and I think this is the first time where we've, at least I've seen an adjustment based on, on these particular facts.
Well, we start in a hole every year and, well, this is so we can start fresh.
Okay, so, but to cover the anticipated expenditures related to the rising number of deaths and the escalating number of coroner emergency certificates?
We had to put something in there, the deaths, that's for cremations, for cremations, anytime someone needs, wants to be cremated, the funeral has to send us, send us an authorization, we sign it, and the funeral, we pay the doctor $50 and the funeral reimburs us.
Okay.
Yeah, just rising number of cremations.
The verbiage is just something we've never seen, just?
But, I mean, mental health's going up, I mean, we've seen 200 more people this year for mental health evaluations, but again, we start in a hole every year, so when our November starts, we have to pay bills from now on.
Got you. Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, seeing no other counsel discussion, any blue cards on this matter? Okay, please call the vote.
District Five?
Yes.
District Six?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
District Nine?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. Ordinance 184, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by adjusting line items in the amount of $449,966 within the Lafayette Police Department.
Motion by Terrio, second by Bellard. Counsel discussion? There is none any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Please call the vote.
District Six?
Yes.
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
District Nine?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy, we're gonna now move to the public hearing. As indicated earlier, some of these have in fact been pulled and we will make note of those at that particular time. I'm gonna officially open this public hearing in the board of review as we serve for all persons designed to be heard on the assessed value of both their real and personal property. The five-minute rule does in fact remain in effect. Appellants have withdrawn the following appeals, L, M, N, O, U, V, and W. The process we're gonna utilize like we've done in the past, Jeremy is gonna read the actual appellant and the information and assessment related to the appellant. If, we will then acknowledge if someone is here representing the appellant or the appellant themselves who want to speak on behalf of this appeal, then we will get the presentation from the tax assessor to follow, then we will then open the floor for discussions, blue cards, any motions and seconds that may be considered, not that they have to be, the, the actual hearing could be as is, and then we'll vote on each item separately, okay? Okay, Jeremy, if you could, please read A.
Item A. Du Trail Michael Keating requests a reassessment on land and improvement located at 212 Cherry Street noted on assessment 6043074. The original assessed value is $179,150 with a requested reassessment value of $136,000.
Okay. Is Mr. Keating here or someone representing you?
I'm representing you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, I'm Rachel Falgu.
Okay, Rachel, you could change information?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
At this time, as it relates?
Do we have a signed authorization?
Yes, we do, would you like it?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Okay. All right, Ms. S. Scott, we're in hours tonight, huh?
And, and he did send a letter to me stating that she would be representing him, he was unable to attend because of an accident at the last minute.
Okay, right, and, and just so we could make sure that we meet all of the legal muster, that, that was a curve, Ms. S. Scott, we're gonna follow your instruction and your direction on this as it relates to these matters, is this the authorization? Mr. Como, anyone representing someone, are you gonna want that authorization acknowledged?
Yes, sir.
For the record?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, um, Ms. S. Scott, I've turned your mic on and just for the purpose of the council, so Mr. Como is gonna want any, any hearing that takes place today, that will, someone will be representing the appellant, he's gonna be requesting the authorization letter, which I'm assuming is something that needs to be of the record, is there a particular way we need to handle that or?
If, if Mr. Como could provide me with the, is there a particular state statute that you're relying on? It's in the Louisiana Tax Commission Rules and Regulations and there is an official form, but in this situation, we'll accept a letter since it was. We just have to ensure that the tax rep or the individual representing the taxpayer does have their authorization to be here, because there may be some confidential information that needs to be discussed or needs to be brought up.
Right.
That's the, that's the reason.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, it sounds like it's nothing more than just some evidence of authority by the actual appellant granting authority to the representative to represent them in this particular hearing. That could be as simple as a signed letter, a signed dated letter.
Okay, right, all right, so in this case, that has been met, we receive the letter.
I haven't seen?
No, no, the clerk, yeah.
She provided one.
And you got one as well. Okay, all right, so, Ms. Rochelle? Thank you.
Okay, um, I had handed out some stuff.
And I did give it to each of you.
And Mr. Keating wanted everybody to see exactly how much the increases from 2015 to 2007, that was 262.70% of an increase over the last two years. And if you have the notice of value, you'll see that the difference in how it was the year prior and what exactly was increased. Where I wanna start is, I assume that the appraisal done by Kobe Mesh is, and approved by Conrad, this is the one that's rebuttling or trying to substantiate the value, is that correct? This one?
The one we just handed out, right.
The one we just handed out, right?
Yeah. Okay. The one that we got in the mail showed the lot of the assessments of where they, what they were trying to compare it to. Comp one was Louisa, sold for $60,000. Comp two was St. Patrick, which sold for $30,000. And comp three was 201 Johnston Street, which sold for $150,000. Comp three right here, this is a commercial property, and it's owned in light industrial. It should not have been applicable here. But both comparable one and comparable two, if this is what we are using to assess Mr. Keating's property, then maybe it should be assessed the same way that these are. If you look at the next few pages, you'll see comparable one, Louise, it is assessed at $16,800. It should be assessed at $6,000. Comparable number two, 318 Patrick Street, is assessed at $10,000. It should be assessed at $3,000. So the comp one, he's only paying $171.25 in taxes. Comp two, he's paying 101.93, and this was for the years of 2016 and 2017. Next, we're gonna go on to the comparable, the comparable properties, which is on page 21 of the pamphlet that Mr. Como handed out. I mean, that alone should definitely put in question exactly how these are being done, but I'm gonna go ahead and go through all the other stuff as well. Do y'all see the reconciliation analysis? Page 21?
Mm-hmm.
There's no 21 in this document.
And the one that Mr. Como gave you?
Qualifications is, qualifications is in my staff on page 21.
Well, the one that you mailed to Mr. Keating shows page 21 as reconciliation analysis.
No, ma'am, that was not mailed to him for this purpose.
So this was changed?
For 2017, what I handed out is what we are providing to Mr. Keating.
So you have no comparable cells in here for? You don't have the grid in here? Where you made the adjustments?
Page 14.
You can barely see him on top.
It's kinda caught off the top. Here we go. Yeah. Okay. Calder Street was dated 3/28/14. When this was done, it was done with the instructions that the comparables be from six, the sixth month, 2014, to the sixth month, 2015. Comparable two is out of range of the date. It's on March 2014. It's not considered a comparable. Dunreath and St. Landry, they were fairly decent comps. However, in not following what the UsePAP guidelines, I don't know how he justified his adjustments or where he derived them from. In following UsePAP, you have to list everything you made the adjustments for and why, or why you did not. And it does say in the introduction of the page that they are following UsePAP guidelines, but I have no idea where to, where to gather how he garnered exactly the price per square foot on the land. And what's, what's different there is also is the functional utility. So, we like comps one and two, we don't like the adjustments, but I went ahead and put in some additional comparables for you because you, I understand that you didn't care for the ones that were so far away. We put in two more comps that are close up. And they don't have such frequent or large adjustments.
Which, which one of those that you put in? In your packet, they're in your packet?
Yes, sir.
Is it the last two? Is it the Dunreath?
Dunreath and Bellevue?
Okay.
Yes. As you'll, as you'll note, they're inside the neighborhood, which also was not delineated in his approach, but I have it marked off where it's in the immediate St. Street area. So it doesn't cross over any thorough view or any kind of, any, anything big. It's contained to the St. Street area. And as you can see, Bellevue is really good, and actually, it looks a lot like Mr. Keating's property when I inspected it. Dunreath, 121 Dunreath, if you look down at the bottom here where it says original list price was 190, and then it dropped all the way down to 145. It was listed in November of 2014, it didn't actually sell until June of 2015. So that's seven months on the market, and then they had to all, come all the way down to 145. And I'm, I'm, I know that the inside of this house actually is superior to Mr. Keating's. So at 145, calculating on the measurement, the difference in there, we're still within the range that Mr. Reed Huvall had done for the tax commission. Then real quick, are y'all, can I go forward?
Yeah.
I don't wanna stop anybody. The income approach is on this piece of paper that's got my handwriting on it?
It was given up.
Oops, sorry about that. Mr. Mesh and Mr. Conrad came up with $33,600 for the income. The market income is what I wrote down in the second column, and the first column is what he actually pays. Now, this is, let me just tell you a little bit about his property. It's a house that was really big, and he went and metered both of them, and he's got three rooms at the top with one bathroom, and two rooms at the bottom with one bathroom. And it's all coed. So you've got three people unless they all got together to rent at the same time, sharing one common area and the bathroom. So, Mr. Keating compensates by charging them 300 or 350, maybe a little above. He always has vacancy as well. But there are a lot of people that pass up his, the opportunity to rent there because they don't wanna share the bathroom with everybody and the different common areas. So it went all the way down, and I subtracted out the, what was actual, what he actually pays is 1,280. The vacancy loss is 1,536 at 10%. I went ahead with Mr. Mesh's and Mr. Como's percentages here, just to show it. The actual expenses, he spends $7,307. He pays the utilities, he pays the gas, he is constantly doing improvements on the house himself because it is, it's an old house. And as Mr. Mesh and Mr. Conrad also put in here, that the effective age is actually 28, I believe, is what you have? I could look it up, but it's 27, 28 years of age on effective age. That's the lifespan of the economic life of the house. And what we typically do is we figure an economic life would be 60 years. So in fact, you only have 33 years left of economic life on this property. The second one, I did all the way, well, how I came out with that cap, he came out with the cap rate, I used that, and it came out to 58, 180, and 88. And of course, Mr. Keating now realizes that he's losing money, and he needs to change that. Then I did the market approach. I researched the market, and I came up with houses, bedrooms usually selling for 450, 550, but again, this is not the same as being like coed and everybody sharing one bathroom and one kitchen and that kind of thing. But I, I went ahead with market, vacancy loss, I put at 10%, effective gross income, I came up with 17, 150. We went with the 10% that was provided by the assessment, the assessor. Total expenses, and this is not including any kind of, can't remember the word. It's not including any kind of reserves you need to like replace your oven, replace your refrigerator, replace the air conditioner, that kind of thing. This is just going straight up, off the top. This is not getting detailed in here. Net income is $10,150. When you divide this by the cap rate of nine dollars, of 9%, I come up with 112,717. And that's considerably different. I did not do a cost approach, and the reason I didn't do a cost approach is 'cause you can back into a cost approach. You can take any property you want with that dollar amount, and you can make it work for you with the cost approach. It really, that's why a lot of lending institutions, they don't even ask for it. They know that we can back into it. I know here, that he said here that he came up with 181. On that cost approach, it, he uses Marshall and Swift, which, I had seen a letter that he wrote saying, can we please continue using Marshall and Swift? Marshall and Swift are just, you know, straight up blank numbers. They're saying, okay, in Louisiana, it's this much per square foot, and you get a variable of this much, and it's just one blanket kind of thing there. But he's getting detailed in, into this specifically for this house. Excuse me. So, but you know, I would, I would urge y'all to even take a look at the Marshall and Swift and look at the variables and see if they're, they're comparable with the local builders and the local vendors, and that's what I use. I go to the builders themselves because our stuff is always different, especially in Lafayette. I mean, we always continually grow, and then we had the flood, and we have all kinds of other things. Marshall and Swift doesn't take, keep all track of all that. And the last thing is, and I told you all about this, I believe, last year, but Revised Statute 47, 1987, B1, states that if any assessment is over 15%, then the assessor must mail the assessment to the taxpayer 30 days prior to the last day of the hearing for the review board. Mr. Keating received his mail on April 27th. This one is dated, I'm sorry, not April, August 27th. This one, he's got dated August 25th, actually, on here, and the bottom assessment, the bottom red piece says, no assessment adjustments can be made by this office after August 30th. So he had three days, three days to get his stuff and to compel an argument, to say this is not right. I mean, he's been, he was shot up in the last year, and he's well over, I mean, that's 263% in the last two years. This was not mailed, and in following with this law, until he can prove that it's been mailed 30 days prior, then he cannot increase the tax. It's also subsequent to Revised Statute 47, 1992, Revised Statute 47, 1966, and 47, 1987, So in conclusion, there's a lot of things that need to be addressed, and I, and I don't, I don't think it's been done properly. I'm not really sure why. Some properties are not assessed higher to where they were brought, and if he changed the assessments in 2016, it should have been taken care of. So that's pretty much all I have to say. Oh, we do agree with Mr. Reed's appraisal, however. So if you wanna take the one from the Louisiana Tax Commission, his assessment property, the fair market value is 136, and the land value is 40,313. Improvement value, which is the building, is $95,687. Mr. Keating does agree to these terms. He can accept this, but he can't accept the large adjustment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Como.
Thank you. I will jog your memory a bit to last year's appeal hearing. This was the case, I admitted to you that we made a mistake last year on this property because we had put it at $32 a square foot. There's nothing in the St. Streets that sells for $32 a square foot, nothing, unless it's falling apart. And I told you we would be back to increase it this year. We had a hearing August 2nd at the Louisiana Tax Commission where Mr. Keating objected to what you did last year. I won that appeal also and told them and him standing there that I would be back if he appealed it again this year at 181. We had to adjust the land size a little bit because we had the land between these two properties a little bit off. We adjusted it. We're back this year asking you to put it at $62 a square foot, which is the bare bottom of pretty much whatever thing sells for in that area, bottom. Most properties, they're selling for $100 a square foot. It's a highly desirable area. So we're asking for you to set the value at 179, 155. That's what we adjusted it to after we changed that land. The sales that she was referring to?
Mr. Como?
Yes.
And, and our packet is 179, 150. Did I just see, you say that you wanted it at, you requesting it at 179, 155, an increase of five?
Well, the assessed value is 17,000. We found that page for you, page five. The assessed value is 17,915, or total value of 179, 155. It rounds off to 9, 915.
Okay. I just didn't know, what was read into the record, I didn't know if that was gonna be necessary to amend that in any way or not. That's why I was trying to get clarity on that.
Just agreed to set it at 179, 155, fair market value or an assessed value of 17,915. What he put on the form may not have been correct. The sales, yes, we use sales six months before and six months after, but we can expand that up to a year on both sides of January 1st, 2015. Income approach that was used, we're not assessing his benevolence. We're assessing the property for what things rent for in that area, the market rate. The market rate in that area is a dollar a square foot. If we use that value, it'd come out a lot more than 183,000 that we're showing on page 15. We showed less. So using less income according to the market, not what he's charging, because if you use what he's charging, yeah, you're gonna come out with a low rate. We don't assess the benevolence. It's what could that house sell for in the market? And as far as the comment about using three bedrooms and one bath, folks, that's taking place in hundreds of apartments around the campus where it's done every day, every day. And a new one getting ready to be built on Pen Hook Road that last year you held a hearing for right here. Same situation. So students are accustomed to that. That's nothing new. So we're asking that you uphold the value that we set this year of 179, 155.
Okay. Mr. Bellard?
Yes, and I think Conrad's answering a lot of my, my questions. The main one that I had was the approximately 262, 7, 70% increase from 2015 to 2017, something that, that they provided, but you're acknowledging that was an error on your part.
Absolutely. I said it last year.
Okay, well, I wouldn't remember from last year.
I'm just saying. The $32 a square foot last year were, was wrong. It should have been more than that.
Okay, so that's the reason for the increase. It was just an error on y'all's part. You're coming back and fixing the area. You're basically saying that $63.89 a square foot in that area is lower than the going rate?
It's going rate.
Sir?
It's at least that, at least that. Most of them are selling for $100 a square foot.
Okay, and 48.50 is what I think the price per square foot, if we would do it your way, is that correct?
48.50? We don't actually appraise price per square foot, but what Mr. Reed had come up with is 40,000, 40,313 for the land.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Any blue cards on this one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if a council member is considering a motion to any adjustments that, that is before you, you could make that at this time. If not, we're gonna take a vote on what is in front of us with, and that is to address the appeal. They're asking for clarity on the five-dollar issue, again, and, and...
Mr. Keating put that number on his form. So the actual assessed value that we currently have is what is in our document. He, he made several errors on his, on his form, so.
Can you clarify the votes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, absolutely. Ms. Esqot, could you give us a clarification on the vote, please?
Sure. If, excuse me, a vote yes would be to grant the appeal... If, excuse me, a vote yes would be to grant the appeal in favor of the taxpayer with the requested assessed values. A vote no would deny the appeal and maintain the established tax assessment by the tax assessor.
And of course, that is of the official document?
Correct.
In the numbers, the accurate numbers, just for the record.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions from council members? Okay, seeing none, you could call the vote on this appeal, please.
District 7? District 8? District 9? District 1?
No.
District 2? District 3?
No.
District 4?
No.
District 5?
No.
District 6?
No.
Motion to grant the appeal fails.
Okay, item B, please.
Schlumberger Technology Corporation requests a reassessment on personal property located at 100 Tidlin Road noted on assessment 2007392. The original assessed value is $3,201,300 with a requested reassessment value of $2,251,800.
Anyone here on behalf of the appellant?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, late about four o'clock today, um, the, um, tax appeals from B to K items, B through F, I'm sorry, B through F.
Has also been pulled?
No, sir.
Or I'm sorry?
Uh, you received additional information from, it's Duff and Phelps on behalf of Schlumberger J Technology Company. They, from what I can understand, a rep was not able to be here, so they provided the documents for you. And that's B through F. And they called them opinions of value. And I'm sure maybe Conrad knows what those are.
Okay, so that, I'm sorry. Mr. Nakam?
Yeah, make a motion to deny the appeal from B through F.
Yeah, I think we would have to read them each and... Hold, hold, let me...
I believe the requirements are that you deal with each item individually.
Yeah. That's what we kind of assume, so. So you want, oh, you, B? So no one is here to represent the appellant in this one? There is information in your folders referenced as opinions of value. You could consider those if you so choose. Are you making a motion to deny B?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to deny this appeal by Mr. Nakam. Does he have a second? Second by Conk?
But he acted on it, correct?
Because there's no one here to hear you. Okay, motion by Nakam, second by Conk. Does the assessor choose to make a presentation on B?
I'll make it for B through K. Schlumberger's being represented by a tax representative who their opinion of value, they took right off the top an obsolescence factor. That's not how we do this. They turn in the numbers and then request obsolescence. When they request obsolescence, as I did with this tax rep, we asked for three years financial income statements. He hasn't provided them as he didn't last year. So we don't grant obsolescence unless we get the information we request.
Thank you very much. Any blue cards on this matter?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Chair? I'm sorry?
Just a point of clarification on the vote. Since the motion on the floor is to deny the appeal, the vote now is reversed. If you vote yes, you are denying the appeal. If you vote no, you're actually granting the appeal.
Right, right. And since we clarify, and let me say this because Mr. Bellard brought up a good question. In this instance, a member of this council chose to make a motion, which is an allowable act. In the previous issue, there was a representative here on behalf of, and no council member chose to make a motion, so it was voted upon as is. But now that Mr. Nak, it's not a necessary, but you know, if somebody says they reviewed this material and they know where they want to go, they could actually make that motion. So that's kind of the difference. So, but of course, the motion here, as Mr. Esq. has indicated, it reverses the action. The motion is to deny. So a yes denies a no grants it, okay? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Esq.
Sure.
With that said, let's please call the vote on B.
District 8?
Yes.
District 9? District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 6?
Yes.
District 7?
Yes.
Motion to deny the appeal is approved.
Thank you very much. C, please.
Schlumberger Technology Corporation requests a reassessment on personal property located at 1201 Young Street located, noted on assessment 2006402. The original assessed value is $2,779,793 with a requested reassessment value of $2,072,692.
Okay, thank you very much. For the record, is there anyone here representing this appellant? There is none. The assessor has made the presentation for this indicating that the appropriate documents requested was not received. Any council member choose to make a motion on this matter? There is none, any blue cards on this matter? Okay, please call the vote on C, please. Um, and since we going back the other way, I don't want to confuse y'all. Mr. Esq.?
A no vote denies the appeal. A yes vote grants the appeal.
All right. Thank you very much. Please call that vote.
District 9? District 1? District 2?
No.
District 3?
No.
District 4?
No.
District 5?
No.
District 6?
No.
District 7?
Nope.
District 8?
No.
Motion to grant the appeal fails.
B, please.
Schlumberger J Technology Corporation requests a reassessment on personal property located at 201 Idar Road noted on assessment 2119831. The original assessed value is $12,833,840 with a requested reassessment value of $8,181,278.
For the record, anyone here representing this appellant? There is none. The assessor's presentation remains intact. The information requested was not received. Therefore, there will not be consideration for opinions of value. Are there any blue cards on this matter? Any council member chooses to make a motion on this matter? Seeing none, please call the vote on D, please.
District 1? District 2?
No.
District 3?
No.
District 4?
No.
District 5?
No.
District 6?
No.
District 7?
Nope.
District 8? Motion to grant the appeal fails.
Schlumberger J Technology Corporation requests a reassessment on personal property located at 2545 Southeast Evangelin Thruway noted on assessment 2005320. The original assessed value is $2,320,807 with a requested reassessment value of $1,271,197.
Thank you. For the record, is there someone representing this appellant? Seeing none, the assessor's comments remain in place. Required information was not received. Therefore, no consideration is being given to the opinions of value. Are there any blue cards on this matter? Seeing no blue cards, are any council members choosing to make any motions on this matter? There is none. Please call the vote on this matter.
District 2?
No.
District 3?
No.
District 4?
No.
District 5?
District 6?
No.
District 7?
Nope.
District 8? One? Grant the appeal fails.
Schlumberger J Technology Corporation requests a reassessment on personal property located at 818 I-10 South Frontage Road noted on assessment 2151354. The original assessed value is $1,392,927 with a requested reassessment value of $788,660.
For the record, is there anyone representing this appellant? Seeing none, the assessor's comments remain on the record. No opinion of value was received, therefore it will not be considered. Are there any blue cards on this matter?
Yes, sir.
No blue cards on this matter? Any council members choose to make a motion? None noted, please call the vote on item F.
District 3?
No.
District 4?
No.
District 5?
No.
District 6?
No.
District 7?
Nope.
District 8? District 1?
No.
District 2?
No.
Motion to grant the appeal fails.
Schlumberger J Technology Corporation requests a reassessment on personal property located at 3329 West Pinhook Road noted on assessment 2108023. The original assessed value is $49,307,321 with a requested reassessment value of $5,735,312.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing the appellant? There is none. The assessor's opinion remains. No opinion of value was received, therefore it will not be considered. Any blue cards on this matter?
Yes.
No blue cards on this matter? Any council members choosing to make any motions? Seeing none, please call the vote on item G.
District 4?
No.
District 5? District 6?
No.
District 7?
No.
District 8?
No.
District 1? District 2?
No.
District 3?
No.
Motion to grant the appeal fails.
Schlumberger J Technology Corporation requests a reassessment on personal property located at 135 Russo Road noted on assessment 2003926. The original assessed value is $2,477,882 with a requested reassessment value of $559,772.99.
For the record, anyone here representing this appellant? There is none. The comments of the assessors on file, no opinion of value was received, therefore it will not be considered. Any blue cards for this matter? No blue cards noted. Any council member willing to make a motion? Seeing none, please call the vote on item H, please.
District 5?
No.
District 6?
No.
District 7?
No.
District 8?
Oh, no.
From a liar.
District 1?
No.
That's right. 2, 2?
No.
District 3?
No.
District 4?
No.
Motion to grant the appeal fails.
Schlumberger J Technology Corporation requests a reassessment on personal property located at 6315 Cameron Street noted on assessment 2008853. The original assessed value is $16,862 with a requested reassessment value of $10,218,749.80.
For the record, anyone here representing this appellant? There is none. The assessor's comments is of record. Opinion of value not received, therefore won't be considered. Any blue cards on this matter? No blue cards on this matter? Any council member willing to motion this issue? There is none. Please call the vote on I.
District 6?
No.
District 7? District 8?
No.
District 1?
No.
2?
No.
District 3?
No.
District 4?
No.
District 5?
No.
Motion to grant the appeal fails.
Schlumberger J Technology Corporation requests a reassessment on personal property located at 305 Idar Road noted on assessment 2101026. The original assessed value is approximately $5,184,000 with a requested reassessment value of $3,288,417.
Thank you very much. For the record, anyone representing this appellant? Seeing none, the assessor's comments is of record. Opinion of value not received, therefore will not be considered. Any blue cards on this matter? No blue cards on this matter? Any council member willing to make a motion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
District 7?
No.
District 8?
No.
District 1?
No.
2?
No.
District 3?
No.
District 4?
No.
District 5?
No.
District 6?
No.
Motion to grant the appeal fails.
Schlumberger J Technology Corporation requests a reassessment on personal property located at 100 North Bernard Road noted on assessment 2088194. The original assessed value is $10,604,983 with a requested reassessment value of $7,901,288.
For the record, is anyone representing this appellant? Seeing none, the assessor's comments are of the record. Opinion of value not received, therefore will not be considered. Any blue cards on this matter? No blue cards on this matter? Any council member is going to make a motion? There is none. Please call the vote.
No.
District 1?
No.
District 2?
No.
District 3?
No.
District 4?
No.
District 5?
No.
District 6?
No.
District 7?
Yes, I mean, no. Just kidding, no.
Motion to grant the appeal fails.
Okay, appeals L, M, N, and O were withdrawn by the appellants. Appeals L, M, N, and O, all related to Bayberry Point Limited Partnerships 1, 2, 3, and 4 have all been pulled by the appellant. We will now move to item P. We have P and Q, which are one in the same. We're going to ask the assessor to give comments on both of those in advance of when we get to that. You could please read P.
Aaron's Incorporated requests a reassessment on personal property located at 240 Ambassador Cafrey Parkway noted on assessment 2104706. The original assessed value is $621,887 with a requested reassessment value of $161,471.
Is there someone representing this appellant? Seeing none, and Mr. Como, I apologize. If the reasons, if your rationale is the same, you could give it. If it's not, you could give it individually.
The same.
Okay, so please.
This is an ongoing situation with Aaron's from last year. It's a constitutional question that ultimately has to be decided by the courts, in my opinion. And the tax commission opinions also, they file appeals in every parish they operate in this year. I'm asking that you deny the appeals and then it just goes from there to up the ladder.
Okay, thank you very much. Any council discussion on this matter? Seeing none or any blue cards on this matter? Okay, no blue cards? Any council members intending on making motions? Seeing none, call the vote on P, please.
District 1?
No.
2? District 3?
No.
District 4?
No.
District 5?
No.
District 6?
No.
District 7?
Nope.
District 8?
No.
Motion to grant the appeal fails.
Aaron's Incorporated requests a reassessment on personal property located at 1900 Moss Street noted on assessment 2114727. The original assessed value is $640,853 with a requested reassessment value of $164,816.
Okay, um, the record reflects that no one is here representing this particular company. Mr. Como's comments are of the record as it relates to tax commission opinion and the courts need to decide. Any council discussion on this one? Seeing none, any blue cards on this matter? Okay, any motions by council members? Okay, any motions by council members? Seeing none, please call the vote.
District 2?
No.
District 3?
No.
District 4?
No.
District 5?
No.
District 6?
No.
7?
No.
District 8?
No.
District 1?
No.
Motion to grant the appeal fails.
All right, I, I do have a question. And I know that an assessment also encompasses, um, property, um, movable property. And I, I don't know if that's why, but in this idea of these two locations, but yet these assessments seem so similar. Is it because, is it that movable property that, that kinda balances things out?
These appeals are...
I'm talking about the, the value, where you assessing it, the value at which you have assessed.
Talking about these two specific?
Yes, these two specific. And I'm looking at an ambassador location and a Moss Street location, and I don't know if tomorrow I could go live and tell everybody that property values on the north side are the same.
It, it's not that, it's, this is simply on the movable property.
Movable?
Not the buildings or the land, just the movable property. And it's specifically, if you wanna get technical, it's on all their furniture that they are lease purchasing with individuals.
So I can see you could, you don't have to go on that internet to buy it.
Right, you can go on either side, either end to, to do the deal, so that's why they're similar.
All right.
In nature.
Thank you so much. Jeremy R., please.
Carol J. Doucet requests a reassessment on land located at 104 South Ridgeway Drive, noted on assessment 6136142. The original assessed value is $151,060 with a requested reassessment value of $75,000.
Is there someone representing this appellant?
My brother could not come because of health reasons. And I didn't know that you have to have any kind of...
Talk, talking to the mic for a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. You can tell this is one, my first time, huh? My brother Carol Doucet asked me before I left, could I please represent him? But I didn't realize I have his form that he submitted to, the appeal form. And it shows, uh, let's see, $87,000 is what he was requesting.
Let, let's do one thing at a time.
Wait.
Your last name is Doucet also?
Yes, sir, I'm Linda Doucet Vialli.
Okay, ho- hold on one second.
And, and, Mr. Chair, um, her, she is T2, so...
I'm right after Carol.
RST, if you look at T, and they all Ridgeview adjacent, uh, Ridgeway, I'm sorry, adjacent properties to each other.
Okay, I, and that, that looks perfectly fine to me.
Right, I understand.
My question is going to be, does this meet the legal muster, is there required waiver, um...
Do you want this, that it'll show?
Yeah, oh, I, we understand you have that, I'm, I'm just talking to our legal attorney so we don't, you know, just get...
No, I understand.
...drugs across the coals.
Tax assessor, that formality, uh, like, uh, other formalities can be waived, uh, without objection. Now, that's, um, certainly, uh, Mr. Como's...
Right, that's kinda what, what I figured. Uh, Mr. Como, do you object to the sister of the appellant, um, standing in?
Because it's all related properties, and this is a family area, I will not object to her representing.
He's got some relatively serious problems.
So let the record reflect that, 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 um, there's no objection to Ms. Linda Doucet representing Carol Doucet on item R and item S. So, Ms. Doucet?
Yes, sir.
You could go ahead on and present your argument at this time.
All right, so this is R, you're talking about 104 South Ridgeway Drive?
104 South, yes, ma'am.
Okay, according to this, it shows that he requested $75,000 and his... I'll read mine because it's basically the same thing.
No, no, read, read, read his.
Well, it's little bitty print, okay. 104, he puts tax doubled from 2015 to 2016. It doubled again in 2017. And his, his argument as to why the, the, what he was compared to is not comparable is that it's undeveloped lots. It's, he has, instead of cul-de-sac, we have ditches. There's about four wood-framed houses in the area on piers. He, he doesn't put piers, but it has, I know that it's piers because I've lived there all my life. The parking, like, across the street is commercial, I mean, the building is commercial. And he was trying to show the depreciation of the valley, value of the property. It's because there's heavy traffic. I don't wanna go into details because I don't want to ruffle any feathers, put it that way. If you understand my drift. Uh, so the parking and the traffic does present some kind of a difficulty, but I don't wanna go into detail. I believe in keeping peace.
All right.
That's it?
That's it for now?
All right, he's asking, because mainly it's been a hardship. Both of us have medical problems. And, um, it presented a hardship for both of us. Now, his other one, do you wanna go on to the next item, or you wanna vote first?
Yeah, we have to do them one at a time, so...
Got it, go for it.
Mr. Bellard?
I'll bless you.
We're gonna hear from the assessor first, then you're gonna ask your question? Mr. Como?